No, they said they got it.
Okay, good.
As for signage, there is some signage on the mapping. There's some existing signage out there. There's some proposed DOT entrance signage. There's a new proposed entrance. We're still kind of finalizing the absolute endgame for a new sign that says branches instead of copperhood and determining whether or not what is there will stay and what is there will go. And we're happy to bring in a final plan, you know, as condition of approval or something along those lines, however the board feels about that.
It's primarily size, which is 24 square feet.
Sure.
That's what's in the down code.
Yep. And we'll make sure that, you know, in the end, whatever it is, we'll meet the public regulations.
Great. I'm a little out of order, maybe. Fay, I know you're a neighbor of them. Do you know anything about this project?
Yeah, sure.
Do you want them, do you guys want to just run through it kind of quickly for the public?
Yeah, I mean, generally when I do, things are a little weird with COVID and Zoom and everything. Usually I do kind of a little spiel of, you know, what we're doing for a project and then answer any questions you might have. Turn that to you a little bit better. I'm Martin from Catterskill Associates. So this is currently known as the Copperhoed Inn and Spa. This is just the existing conditions map of it. Here is the copperhood there, and this is what we kind of, or at least I love when they refer to as the island versus the mainland. What we're proposing is a redevelopment of the Copperhood Inn, complete building renovation that includes taking out all of the hotel rooms that center of the building and rebuilding it up and rounding it up. It's going to include, you know, fire sprinklers, elevator, things of that nature. We're going to be doing a big parking expansion. Currently, there's about 16 parking spaces on the site. We're going to be doing a large parking lot down near the asophis, but not next to it.
Correct.
We're also proposing to do five temporary work cabins. They're about 150 square feet on what I call the island in this big, flat, dry area where there's currently a tennis court as well as a comfort station. It's going to be about 1,700 square feet. That'll have bathrooms, accommodations for people who are out working in these work cabins, no overnight accommodations there.
So when you say working, you mean, you know, these sort of thing?
Yes.
Laptop things?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
This is just an overall view. As you can see, we've got a little bit of a bigger building footprint. The entire building's not being torn down, just renovated. Then over here, we have a big parking area. This is where our new parking is going to be. This is a branch of the asophis that comes back into here and reconnects with the actual asophis, which is over there. That's why I kind of refer to this as the island. As part of the design, we actually went through and toko'd this entire area to determine where it was elevationally in relation to the floods and determine that this shaded area is all above the flood based on elevations. And that is where we're proposing five work cabins and one comfort station.
Do they have permanent foundations?
They will be pure foundations because although we will be above the base flood elevation, it will still technically be in this special flood hazard area. So in order to meet the regulations, it'll have to be pure foundations and raised at least two foot above the base flood elevation. That'll all be taken care of. And I actually have a list of what the elevations need to be. Once the buildings are built, my surveyors will come back through and do what's known as an as-built flood cert to determine that they were built above that, and that all goes to, you know, the insurance companies to mitigate insurance losses or anything like that. This is the proposed parking area that we're talking about. We did receive a variance for this project, although there's some question about that right now, but we received variance for the amount of parking. The zoning law says that we have to have approximately 140 parking spaces, which is just completely impossible for this site, if you know the site at all. So we have right now proposed, we actually have 44 regular spaces down in this lot, 14 regular spaces up here where the existing lot, as well as two handicap spaces and one bus unit, bus parking area. We are changing the entrance off of 28. The entrance currently is right here, and we're actually going to move it to right next to the building. So it just makes pulling in, going down to the parking lot all much easier and much more safe. We've had conversations with DOT about this. We've had conversations with DOT about this, and we are in the process of getting that approved. They're very happy with it because we're going to be controlling the entrance more. As part of this, we did do a replacement septic system design for the entire site as well as new septic system that will go on to the island portion. We also did a full stormwater plan, which is going out to the DEP Friday or Monday. I actually just finished this binder here, is the engineer's report for the entire site, which I brought for everyone to take a look at.
So would parking lot be all pervious?
What's that now?
Would the parking lot be pervious?
The parking lot, we've been going back and forth. Right now, we treat it as gravel. Gravel has a rate of 98% pervious, basically, in the hydrocap modeling. So it increases your volume that you have to treat. Stormwater requires us to treat a full one-year rainstorm, which we are going to be able to do. Steve and I have been talking more about making this an alternative, more pervious area, but we will still keep the same stormwater plan. So there's a couple of different options out there as far as like a honeycomb type matting that you can use and plant grass in it, and it still will hold up a vehicle, which haven't chosen the right structure yet. So right now, we're proposing it as gravel. It may be gravel, or in the end, it might be a grassed area with some type of structure component to it that will allow us to park on it all in all, it'll all still be treated as part of a full stormwater plan. And DEP has provided us a list of approved materials, and we're still trying to figure out if we can use something that's easier to plow than ground.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Plowing is a big thing.
Yeah, that's right.
With the trees and then the whole shop and, yeah.
So again, we've done full septic system design, full stormwater plan for the entire facility, as well as public water supply, which has gone through the Department of Health. We've actually received approval on that. I'm trying to think of any other approvals that we have received already or in the process of. I think we've hit all the big ones. DEP, sewer and stormwater, DOT entrance, planning board, obviously, zoning board on the parking variance, and floodplain administration. We have to receive-
Floodplain development permit.
Yes, we have received floodplain development permit, which we have received that.
How are you going to access the island?
Sure. There's actually, there's an existing footbridge that goes over to the island currently, and this is just meant to be, it accesses all the hiking trails and the tennis court that's over there, and we're going to continue to use that footbridge. And again, there's no overnight accommodations. So that'll just be continued usage as it is now. Trying to get to those pages, sorry.
So you're not going to allow anyone to go to the woods, basically?
Well, the point is to try to get people to feel like they're going into the woods and separate themselves from society and have this experience.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit of adventure to get there.
Right.
So this is just kind of a blow up of that section of the island that we're talking about that is all above the base flood elevation. So it's above the floodplain. This is the tennis court, if you know the property at all. There's lots of trails throughout here. These are the buildings that we're proposing, again, the workstations for people to bring your laptop or tablet and work on. This is the comfort station, again, that's going to have the restroom facilities and a couple more workstations. You can have a small little conference after COVID of a couple of people in there. That's the highlights for that. It will have its own public water supply well here and its own septic system over there, which has all been discussed with DEP. Any other questions I can answer?
What's your ETA on your, when do you think the buildout will be done?
As far as approvals, I expect within the next three months, we should have all the approvals that we can get. There's, one approval would be a public water supply on this island. Until we have all of our other approvals and the site plan approval, it doesn't make sense because you actually have to develop the well in order to get the approval for it. So approvals, I would say that we would be three months approximately to finalize the rest of the approvals that we need, assuming that the board really likes the project. And then as far as reconstruction, that's really going to be a matter of-
I mean, I think realistically, we're looking at shutting the place down after later day. Probably take 12 months to build.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that's the realistic, yeah.
That's probably realistic.
Right.
So reopening fall of '22? COVID will be behind us, and life will be more, so that'd be perfect.
Does anybody from the board have any questions?
I'd like to get a clarifying question in, if they can hear me or if I should ask this for you.
No, they can hear you, right?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mark.
I just couldn't hear a little bit of that. I wanted to get clarification. I talked about the activities in this special flood hazard area that necessitated the permit, the floodplain development permit. We saw your application materials, the elevation certificate, the first floor elevations and all that, but I couldn't hear, did you say you obtained that or that's how it works?
You can come closer.
I'm sorry. So Mark, nice to see you again. We were granted the floodplain development permit from Rob Stanley based on the no-ride certificate that we sent him. What I was referring to as far as flood certs is when the buildings are actually built, we'll have to do an as-built flood cert of those, and then that would determine the insurance rate. So we're going to ensure that they are built two foot above the base flood elevation as we're proposing it. Does that answer the question?
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I think the copy of the floodplain permit that we have in our files isn't signed by Rob, so I don't know if it's, you know, if we have an interim copy or something, but maybe you could-
We did find that. I mean, it was sent to us by Rob. I think he just forgot to sign it, and we are trying to get in touch with him to make sure that it gets signed so that everything is in order.
Okay.
And I actually have a copy of that with me if the board does not have a copy of it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
No problem, Mark.
Everyone open their phones up for the public comment.
Yeah, you forgot to do that.
Okay, so if anybody would like to make a public comment, they can call 845-688-5004. 688-5004. First caller will win a prize. Get to work in the secretary's office in the building zoning department for a second. 688-5004. I guess we have no public comment for the phones.
What is the status of the ZVA at the site?
At some meetings, I don't know how many or how much there is. Do you know, Joyce?
What's that?
The ZVA meeting?
Yes, sir.
Everybody's getting one or two there, April or May, April or June, around that time.
I just want to make sure they get it down.
Have you hung in there till we realize, oh, I was waiting.
We're getting behind.
Yeah, yeah.
Cliff, I do have a copy of the permit that was sent to us by Rob Stanley. I didn't know if you guys had a copy for your file or not. I'm happy to give you this one.
And we should, but I'll take that.
And like I said, I think you just forgot to send us the scanned signed copy.
So I've been tracking down the sign. They win a prize, too.
Grace has got a copy.
Notice that Rob hasn't signed it.
We can have Rob sign it when we see him if you want. She has a copy.
Yes, please. If we can get emailed a copy of that, would you be?
Yeah, certainly. I'll write it in paper, and I'll ask Rob if he will sign it for you.
Sure.
I'll mail that to you, and I'll email it as well.
Yeah, I will leave you my email address before.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Could you like to name here?
All right, thank you, Mark. We'll catch on that. We're going to address that.
Do you are the engineer?
I'm Catterskill Associate, Project Manager.
Any board members have any additional comments? Vivian or Sam, anything additional?
I think that we've pretty much covered everything that we needed to assess, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't see any problems at this point. Any issues raised by the neighbors don't seem to exist.
I didn't have a new hood neighbor next week.
We're going to raise property values.
I'm comfortable with addressing the things that need to be addressed. If they're procedural matters, we need to take care of them. I'm certainly not concerned about signage being applied after a site plan approval. That's very common. And with regard to this being a special permit, I think we're asking for a special permit for a use that's been there for a century, so I'm not worried about that either.
So then, in that case, like a motion to close the public hearing? I make the motion. Alan, who's, Alan made the motion, I second it.
7:25, go. I'll get it.
Thoughtful life. All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
All right. That concludes the-
All right.
That concludes the public hearing for the Branches project. Next, we will open our regular meeting. Everyone, please rise for the pledge. You've got the attendance.
Yes.
Have you added Sam?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to sit right over there. All right. You guys want to begin with Branches? Any further comments? Are we moving forward? And I think we should make, if we do an approval, we should make it preliminary just based on, we've got these other issues addressed, provisional rather, and then once those are addressed, then they can move forward.
So conditional?
Yeah, conditional, thank you. Hi, Mike.
On the negative declaration of the board on this meeting, there are two additions to the changes that Ellen wanted. We will make two corrections. I had- incorrect at page 33. A clarification that there would be greater than one acre of disturbance at the site, and that we would be preparing stormwater prevention plan that would have to get covered from the New York D E C on notice of intent filing. I had thought it was less than an acre. It's over one acre, less than five acres. And then the bald eagle comments, which the board has seen, we did make those a little bit more bold in the document. Did note that although the bald eagle nest is located over 3,000 feet away, the regulations or the D E C regulations require mitigation only if that nest is within 660 feet of line of sight. So those were the only two changes, and the only thing we need, that the make deck was voted on at the last meeting, we would need the document signed. I think Martin has two copies of that in black line.
Yeah, he has a signed copy of that.
The board wants me to send in later questions, in later question by the public comment, does the board want me to send a full set of the documents to the ZVA so they're there? I mean, I have them here in the file.
No, Grace said no.
No.
I'm going to say something, first of all.
Go ahead.
Alan, can you pick up his audio at all?
Yeah, yeah.
It'll record okay on YouTube and everything else? Because next time, who's bringing a laptop? We can't, you know, I'm not sure how good the public can hear this and all that.
But she said she can hear it.
Okay, good.
I'll raise it for the dub.
Yeah, but for live, it's not really-
Yeah, I don't know. But so you call me if you need it.
We can get a laptop for that if you're going to do something like this, you know, just so the public can hear it okay? Because on live feed, I'm not sure if they could.
I'm having trouble hearing it.
They can barely hear you guys because, again, the microphone's too far away. I just want to make sure you're all covered and everybody can hear it, okay?
You think we're all okay? You think you can hear it?
If you're going to do it now, but I would strongly suggest a laptop.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, please. Is he able to hear that guy?
Mike Royal, yes.
Yeah, and he can be here or?
No, he cannot.
Well, it's a lot better, you know, I mean, allow them to come in, you know, for that, but if we move along and just have a laptop next time.
Yes.
The live feed really is, they can barely hear you guys, I'm telling you.
Okay.
I get calls all week about this.
If the audio is not doing a call me, I can make you a-
I'm just talking about the live feed, you know, if you could.
Okay.
If you're kind of short, they're not going to be able to hear. You know, whatever you can tell, you'll tell it, you know.
Okay.
The live feed is not getting out there.
Okay.
I mean, alternatively, we could turn up the sound on my laptop.
You can't hear him at all. We're like, who said on the phone?
The text is on now?
Yeah, let's go on.
Because she has a laptop there.
We could use my laptop's sound and he could turn his down.
No, we're almost done, right? Or is it going to be a while again?
No, you're not.
I think Mike is also representing another project.
Yeah, he can turn his laptop off for the next project for the national speech or?
Yeah, I thought it was.
So she's got to hear it, it's got to be louder.
I did that the first time, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to-
I mean, I'm assuming mine might be louder, but I don't know until we try.
A laptop is a lot louder than a cell phone.
Yeah, then, oh, could you just fill her laptop then?
Yeah, just give me that, you know.
I just have to get these pens.
We'll try to stop petting the pen, then it's real soon.
I know, we hate it.
You do that, what can you?
Oh, you're on here.
We had it off because it creates a horrible screeching feedback loop. Now you can, the other public can enjoy that instead.
Cliff, if you mute your mic while Mike is speaking, he'll help with the-
Oh, yeah, sure. Good.
All right. Thank you, guys. Intern off, Jeff, if you can.
Yeah, it's up now.
If we can hear over here, she'll be able to hear.
It's up now.
Good, thank you.
Where are we?
Mike was talking about whether you guys wanted us to send copies of everything that was submitted to the zoning board to you.
And the answer is no, correct?
Yeah, I actually think that as part of this project, I probably would have carved our CCP guys on everything that we sent to the zoning board because it was running concurrently.
It was a while ago.
It was. August, I believe, is when we received approval, so we would have been June or July.
Can you ask Mike if he heard all of that? He doesn't need to send it.
It was August. Grace?
The ZVA received-
I'll follow up with him.
...in county in August?
We received approval in August, I believe it was. So we would have submitted to the ZVA in June or July. I can't remember exactly the date.
We presented in the July ZVA meeting, the August holster county county board meeting, and then the August ZVA meeting is when we got it.
Yeah, we can't hear now, click, click.
It was August, it was August, August.
Oh, okay.
It was July, August.
Okay, now you sit here. Okay. I was muted, so now I unmuted.
Oh, you're unmuted? All right, good. You have to say this number.
Don't just break, God, no.
All right. All right, that's it from Mike. That's it from the board.
I'm good.
So can somebody make a conditional motion, please?
I hope that we approve the Branches project conditionally to go ahead.
With Rob's signature and to work out the ZVA public hearing.
Conditioned on having Rob's signature on what?
On the flood.
Floodplain development permit.
Oh, okay. Floodplain development permit and also the, what is it?
The ZVA public hearing.
Okay. Okay, and then they would be approved to go ahead with developing the project?
Once we get those things, yes.
Once we got those things, okay.
My second.
What was the second?
Sam.
Sam.
All in favor?
Roll call. Roll call vote.
Sam, Scott, Cliff, Bootfall? Art Christie?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Vivian Wilson?
Yes.
The videographer, Ellen? Okay, all in favor?
So, um-
So we'll-
Thank you. Thank you. Also, as far as the approval, should we have someone write something up so that we don't have the same issue that we're having with the ZVA right now?
Insofar as, write what up?
Some kind of form, you know, something written up formally, given the project approval, conditional approval based on those two conditions.
My understanding here is that what happens next is that we make final action, Joyce certifies it, and I forward that along to county planning. That's my understanding.
Fantastic.
And he will certainly receive a copy of that.
That's, I just don't want to have an issue like we're having with the-
No, I completely agree.
This was a different, this was like a protocol thing because it didn't go into the paper.
You're saying like for Ellen to write something, a draft of a, a short draft of a decision or something?
Mike, we just, we have a small issue with the ZVA where there's, we never received any paperwork for the approval that we got for the area variance for the parking. And I just want to make sure that we have, you know, we've done all of our Is and crossed all of our Ts for this approval.
Okay, and on your approval, does Ellen write the approval or how do you usually do it?
I think-
On line?
They were just explaining how they handle that process. I don't think you could hear them, I apologize.
Okay.
So what we're going to do is have the ZVA just approve what they are, we're going to have to put a legal notice in announcing that this is going to come before the ZVA. If people want to come before, we can. The ZVA will basically say what they said last time, I would assume it's going to be up to Mark Lowery if they want to do that. And you're just, Cliff's going to talk to Mark. And once they do that, then we'll do the final action to the county. You'll get a copy, and the copy will go in the file. And this all happened when COVID hit, the secretary is gone, and a lot of things were overlooked, there was panic. So we apologize for that inconvenience, and we'll-
So that's what's happening with the zoning board?
Yes, and then- Yes, and then.
We're gonna we're gonna have a new public hearing?
That was the issue, it was parking, I know. We're gonna do a public hearing and open it to the public, so if you want to be there, that's fine.
Yeah, most of them.
Yeah, just in case, you know, if those questions come up, be there.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would be for that issue.
Yep.
And then that's approved, then they can move forward.
Okay.
So there really wouldn't be much.
But our approval is just contingent upon that, so you don't have to come back here again and get a, come to another meeting.
Exactly.
It just kicks in after that.
And 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 that was what I was asking, is will a formal conditional approval for your board now be written as well and copied sent to us?
Then we'll do a notice of action.
That's what that is. That's what, the answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to the board.
Thank you.
So the next two items, I'll just go over very quickly, are Firelight and Orem. The representative, Matt Rudikoff, from Orem reached out to me and said they're in the process of making some changes.
Alan?
They're in the process of making some changes to their their site plan, and they'll resubmit that once they, once they finish working through that, so we won't see them tonight. And then Firelight, Art, Vivian and myself were able to get out to that site today and see some of, and see some of the, where the flood had been. And they're also making changes based on where the water was and, you know, relative to their sites. Everything in a more conservative direction. So and then they'll they'll resubmit once they finish that. And does anybody have any comments about those two projects before we move on? No? So, and the only thing left on my agenda is a Sparkwood project, which I'm recused from.
When you two refuse, we are inquiry.
Yeah, we have three members, so I don't know.
So I don't think we can have a conversation with only three members.
Are we allowed to have the applicant speak to us?
The only thing you're allowed to do is set a date for another meeting. That's it.
And this should be a non-workshop, a regular meeting?
Um, to do, I mean, they can come to a workshop, you can't.
Think that applicants can.
You can't vote on anything on workshop, yeah, so there's.
So can they talk to the board, even though there's not many people here?
So what we'll have to do is, whenever we do have this meeting, we have to reach out specifically to all board members, we gotta get four people here, so whether with Alan, we can get John, Joanne, we need four people.
Well, we had a public hearing, though.
Because they're not recused for the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All of you guys want to come up, somebody to talk to you, come up, we'll talk to them. You kind of hear?
Hi, so, sir, we can't have a vote on this today.
Are you guys sure the board's recused?
What, the the issue was that since we only have two people that aren't recused, we need more than that for a quorum, so we can't take care of any business at all at this time, until we have more members present who are not recused. So what we have to do is make arrangements to have another meeting, which you can come and present, and possibly we can discuss and do a vote, but that can't happen today.
Okay, what, can we talk about the timeline for what that is? Because.
Yeah, I don't know really how how we're gonna do.
We've been waiting for this meeting, so, and Dave were recused last month as well, so I just don't know how there was, like, I called, making sure we were on the agenda for today, so I'm just a little confused.
Well, last month was the hearing, so.
Great, but that was.
But you weren't here for that, is that right?
Sorry.
You weren't able to come.
He was here.
He was here and and so I think it would have to be the next regular meeting.
We had another person here last year.
But you're saying you need four people or?
We need four, there's seven members.
We need four people.
Okay.
And we only had five here, two of which are recused, we are now inquiry.
No.
That it's not gonna come up next meeting?
We have not, we don't have enough people, we cannot. There's COVID going on, we're looking very open, half the town.
I mean, it's still a public service.
Yeah, no.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
I sat through my whole insult through COVID, so, you know, as much as you can.
Well, okay, if we can't come to that today, can we at least talk about what we can do in the meantime to, like, be prepared for this meeting if there's anything?
Well, one thing was, they need a.
Did we hear any feedback from the county?
Yeah, there was a county meeting.
One issue.
They need a site plan.
They need a site plan.
Yeah.
You have a site plan.
What, well, we sent over a site plan, I remember I brought it the day of the meeting.
We're not gonna site plan.
Yeah, I.
I'll get Grace.
I came the day of.
They looked at a site plan on, at the meeting, they don't.
Yes, the site plan that you, you submitted the survey that, that Don Brewer had done, and you drew in the parking spaces on it, but the survey was not complete as a site plan.
What does it need?
It needs actually the location of the surrounding houses, buildings, as well as just the property line, so those are not on the survey map.
You've got that right there, right?
Yeah, it's on the map, but it's ruined by, uh.
It doesn't have Mary Jane property, it doesn't have a location of her houses.
It does.
It does? Maybe that's a different. Let me see.
Yeah, come take a look.
Because the the county didn't get a map until today.
Yeah, you see, they've got the house, because workshop house, they don't have Mary Jane's two houses here.
They just have a lot lines. So I'm not showing the adjacent uses, the adjacent structures.
Right. And then there is no information about these, since they're not technically a butters, but as far as the distance from the applicant's.
And there are on map roads here, there's a map road here, that horseshoe, then there's the private extension of St. Mary's Lane, I think.
So they couldn't assess the, the, the impact without knowing that information?
I don't know if this is.
And then they objected to.
Project recall, didn't have to talk about.
Survey also.
Your computer is talking. Yeah, Vivian, they're on live TV there, I don't know.
Okay.
So we need, we need a new map, basically.
Let's call the site plan.
Yes.
Grace, Grace.
Is this, is this, I can't hear the conversation, does this pertain to the project's recall?
No, it doesn't. So, um, that sounds like you're pretty much done for the night, far as this meeting?
No, no, no one's here from Orem, no one's here from, uh.
Firelight.
Orem and Firelight are still revising their their site plans, so they didn't present to us tonight.
So Ellen and Mark, you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Well, it's my understanding that you can vote on this without sending it back to the county again.
But.
That's true, right?
They can't, they don't have anyone to vote.
Well, Grace is gonna.
Indefinitely.
Grace, my, my understanding is what county wants is a site plan, basically. And what you've submitted is a survey map, and it's informational, but it does have the information that they're looking for. I believe a site plan can be prepared by a surveyor, I wouldn't know. Perhaps you could have, I believe Don Brewer prepared that map or somebody.
Yeah, this is just what the application that I filled out in October and submitted to you guys, this is what I put as this in was, in the two meetings we've been to since then, this is what we've been referring to as the map that I submitted, that the application called for, so I just want to be like specific about what we need, because I was under the assumption that this is what we've been working with for the past three months, so.
But the county, they felt that was incomplete, so they want something more complete.
Okay, so.
And that's for the county to vote on it. That really is not necessarily for us to vote on, it's for the county.
Right.
But it would help if we had the same thing, so that we could assess.
Well, you've done a site, this is, you know exactly what the book's like.
I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which wasn't discussed at all in the meeting when they had questions about the site and no one was there to answer their questions. Like about where the neighbors are, they had our hours wrong, and there was just some information that I felt like the county didn't have that we weren't able to speak to, so it's like, I just want to know what we need to share.
Actually, when the county meets, the people who, from the community who are attending can speak, and and I was wondering if there was a reason why no one spoke at the county meeting, because you, I think you were there.
Mm-hmm.
And and Doug Hauska was there, neither one of you spoke, and I didn't know if you were muted and couldn't speak or, or, you know.
Yeah, I was just unable to speak previously.
No, I mean, I mean, at the, at the county meeting.
Yeah.
So I'm saying that if you want to speak at the county meeting, that's option for the community who's attending.
Right.
It's always an option.
I just meant more like you were present as the, I thought, as the liaison from the town to answer some of the questions that they had.
Oh, oh, okay, you have to understand, because I'm on the planning board, I have to be recused, that's their rule.
Okay.
That's why I didn't speak. I'm glad you brought that up, because I wanted you to know.
Okay.
It's not that I didn't have anything to say, it's that I was prevented from even answering questions, which is frustrating.
Yeah.
But the town can vote on this without having to go back to county.
That's my understanding.
Okay, so, I mean, looking at best case scenario, so if we send this back to the county, maybe next month, the the board will send, get it together, and then we could send it back to the county, which is another month, so I mean, we're looking at like.
Well, you can send your, if you have, once you have that site plan that's complete, you can send that to the county. Or, Grace, does that have to go through us?
I'm not sure we have talked to Robert Leavitt about that.
Okay.
I believe that when we referred, they were providing the copies every time I have them out, the map, with the parking spaces, the map without the application assigned. So whatever they had, it was provided to me. My understanding, because the referral process is, I send them a copy of everything submitted to this board, so I assume the site plan would have to go before this board and then referred to county, but I don't know that that's true. It's about a conversation for Robert.
I think that would make sense, yeah.
It would make sense, but often when I think things make sense, I'm.
I mean, it would be good that we knew that we had the same, the same map as as the county.
It seems a proper course of action.
Yeah.
What did the county do? They did not reject it, correct? Did they approve it?
No, they sent it to re-referral for you guys.
Okay.
Based on some things that I was hoping we could talk about today, but I don't, I guess, I don't know if we can talk about them if there's no word.
I think we need to talk about that when there's a quorum and hopefully the next month at the regular meeting, which is the second Wednesday of each month.
But the reason I ask, the county, the county planning board did not reject us.
No, they did not reject or approve. They said it has to be resubmitted.
Okay, the reason I ask is.
Resubmitted, I guess that means resubmitted by us, right?
Yeah, I think so. But the reason I ask is, had they rejected it, then we have to vote with a, I think, the super majority, which means we need all five people who aren't recused to show up and vote. Do a site plan, show the other buildings, show the adjacent roads, you'll be better off in the long run. We were, we saw this as a minor enough matter that working with you on a marked up survey, we were comfortable with that.
Mm-hmm.
I think with all this transpired, it's in your own best interest, and you're talking a couple of days of work here, this is not going to take a long time for somebody to draw something up. That's my advice.
So, yeah, just because, I just want to be clear on the reasoning that it's now about the other houses surrounding, because in terms of parking spots, I know that there was, like, I think at the public hearing, you were talking about some contingencies, and one of your contingencies was about where parking can be allowed, so just before we pay thousands of dollars to get a plan drawn out, I want to know where we can have parking, if we have enough parking.
And we took that, we've taken that condition off the table, because based on Vivian's visit and the way the lane, the way the land lays out.
Okay.
You know, I withdraw my former condition of no parking behind the building, I'm not worried about that.
But there was two other conditions that we were interested in talking about, as the hours, I was providing, you know, provisional opening hours, I wasn't, you know, expecting to, you know, have that set in stone. I think it's more reasonable to ask that we operate within daylight hours if they're concerned about light. Uh, you know, we're gonna have to adjust our hours according.
You know, if you want to say, you know, from dawn to dusk, you know, you can do that, health department's gonna want to know too.
Sure.
When you go for health department approval in Ulster County, they're gonna want to know, what are your hours, what's your menu?
Right.
So it's not anything that you don't already have to do.
Of course, yeah.
You know, Audrey, you're in this business, you understand this.
Yeah. Yeah, we just, I was reading, I was watching the notes after the special hearing, and I knew you had about six contingencies, so I was just.
Was there another condition that you had a concern about?
Yeah, about the live-in, and why is that gonna be considered necessary for us to operate the business there?
I think people have a different attitude towards their neighbors, so if you're living in the house and you're running a business, that's one thing. If you're renting the building to run as a business and you don't live there, you're not necessarily a neighbor, and this was about neighborliness, that's why I thought that was an important condition.
Sure, we're having these issues with our neighbors before there's even a business there, though.
Well, I guess, I mean.
See, the planning board, you know, they did, they had serious issues about the traffic pattern, seeing as it's a very narrow property, even if there's room to put cars, is there room to maneuver cars, is there room to remove or maneuver more than one car coming in and out, is there room for delivery trucks and car traffic? And then with all that potential traffic, then it becomes a quality of life issue. So those, those did come up as issues, well, you were there, you were there at the meeting, right? You heard what they were saying.
But that's not really dependent on us living there, I mean, that is true, but.
That's correct, and it's nothing to do with you living there.
So I guess we were just like, we live there now because there's an apartment there, our goal is to eventually make money, so we don't live there, so we just want to kind of parse out whether or not this is like a requirement that's set in stone by a law or just because, I just want to have that understanding.
You're seeking a special permit where it's allowed, it's allowed in that zoning, that's the hamlet zoning there, the residential, it's not the commercial hamlet. So the special permit is something that the book allows to happen, it's up to this board to think about the conditions. Uh, I was reacting to the response from the neighbors, and I thought it'd be a good condition in your favor to say, well, we're, you know, we're living there. If that's too much of a condition, then tell us not to have it, and we'll see where we go.
Yeah, I mean, we're, it's fine for the time being, we just don't want to be required to live there indefinitely to run a business.
Yeah, what you makes it, look, what you bring up makes sense, you know, considering everything that happened, but we're the only employees, so we will be very present, if But we're the only employees, so we will be very present if that is kind of what addresses the issue at hand, yeah.
See, the conditions, I mean, what we originally aimed to do was to mediate between you, the business owners, and the community because you're obviously of very different interests, and to try and make these projects, as much as possible, a benefit to the community in the big picture. So all these little things add up. You know, it's not like one thing is going to make or break. It's all these things add up.
But I will say this, as the person who introduced that condition, it's, it's, it's not essential to me. Your neighborliness will come from being good business owners, the concerns for parking, deliveries and noise. Those are operational issues that you will resolve. They're not, these are not impossible to resolve. How trash comes in and out, how food comes in and out, how people park. People figure out how to get through a narrow way.
Right.
You know, they're not all idiots driving 50 miles an hour down the street. You know, we got to give some, some credit for common sense there. I don't see any of these operational issues as things that you can't, that you cannot overcome. And you've gotten your experience in this industry, so I'm sure you can figure it out.
Right.
And living there is not an essential condition to me.
Okay, that's what...
But I differ with his opinion because I feel that they are major quality of life issues for the neighbors, all of the neighbors. And they have each spoken at the hearing, which Daniel was here, but they've also, what's that?
You mean both of the neighbors?
No, all of the neighbors, the supermarket, the Hauskas, that would have two houses, three, well, the three Hauskas broke up, and Mary Jane Christensen, and those are the abutters. But the neighbors on the other side of the railway strip are also feeling that their quality of life is going to be impacted. So they're speaking of.
Since technically speaking, they do not abut your property, they were not informed, but they had a fair point to say, well, it's just a narrow strip of land that separates us. I get that. And these are the, these are the letters and emails we've received from people who are in opposition urging us to vote against the special permit.
Well, another point that, you know, I was hoping to maybe revisit is traffic and parking and like that. The driveway traffic is really a big concern as a quality of life for our neighbors is I would be interested in revisiting the clause we spoke about earlier, that if there's not sufficient parking available, then you can pay a one-time fee to have parking towards the town. And I understand that completely, you know, the Hauskas and all of our neighbors, that they don't want traffic back and forth, you know, all the time. So I don't know if this is something that we would want to revisit because, you know, like you said, there's a...
That's an interesting thought, yeah.
The people who live there, both the grocery store and the kid, I know these were all like emotional things that came up that I understand, so...
You could volunteer to say, although we have off-street parking available on our property, we're willing to forego that and go the alternative route of the one-time fee so that we're not bringing additional traffic into the property. I mean, that's a very big mitigation.
I mean, I think it would make everyone happy, yeah.
That doesn't seem workable to me because as a customer, I see a driveway, I see a place of business, I drive there. And what, I see no parking sign? What do I do? How do I pick up my takeout? I mean, I don't see how that can be a no parking zone. No driving in?
Yeah.
I mean, if the driveway is completely close to traffic?
Well, we live there, so trucks have to access it. You know, people might occasionally turn around, but if we have no parking sign...
But then how do they, how do they actually access you without parking?
They park on Main Street and walk.
Walk up.
It's a Main Street address.
I mean, does that, does that work? I mean, you still have to get deliveries. That would be...
Yeah, we still have to have deliveries accessible. We've had, yeah. But we're a small business.
This is a risk that they're willing to take as a business to say that customers will still come, given the quality of their product regardless of the availability of onsite parking. That's a business risk they're willing to take, it's that one.
That means closing up the driveway to customers because you can't have a customer driving in without stopping and getting out of the car. And that's what the neighbors are not opposed to, having cars parked there. Like if you had your car parked there during the time that you're there, that's, that's part of a residential use.
I mean, I know it isn't a leaky, a traffic...
In and out, in and out, in and out, because you're going to hopefully have a lot of people coming in and out. Otherwise, you can't make any money, so...
What we all always anticipate is walk-up traffic. I mean, when people go to Bray's, they don't always pull into the parking lot. Nine times out of 10, they're pulling up and parking on Main Street right in front.
Yeah, I mean, there will still be cars, including ours, that go there, you know, but it will mitigate a lot of traffic and parking buildup on their property, which is right there, so.
Vivian, you're correct that it's always possible the customer's going to come, see a driveway, go in there. But I think it's, it's different for someone taking advantage of what they see as an available place to park as opposed to inviting people to say, free parking, come here.
I didn't even think of that. I didn't think of people coming in from outside and parking, not patronizing your store or coming in and patronizing your store and just parking and going out shopping, which now that you bring it up, I guess people would do that. I mentioned they do that in the supermarket parking lot as well.
Yeah, I mean, this is an issue of any business, basically, where how many places have I ever worked where people park in places that are not supposed to, that's going to happen, but...
That's why there are signs unauthorized cars will be towed at owner's expense.
Yeah, I just think it would be a thing also that would, we obviously would like our neighbors to be more welcome. We are not trying to, you know, open, you know, you said it's very divisive for what the community wants. Like, I hope not. I want to do this because I would like to provide something nice to my community. That's why we're doing it. So if we can extend something to say, hey, we understand your concerns, and we would like to at least, you know, alleviate some of these, that seems worthwhile to me, so, and I'm willing to do that.
I think that's a big step. I think that's a big step. Do we know when we can meet? Is it going to have to be the next official planning board meeting?
I don't see how we could meet any other time, really.
Cliff, this has nothing to do with that, so I got to talk to you.
Okay.
The thing is, if you could please find out if Joanne Tao and if Jahaan Warne have cable 23 channel through Spectrum TV. According to the governor's COVID proclamation 120.1, all board members can meet through teleconferencing. They can watch the TV, hopefully, if they have cable TV. A lot of people don't now, but then they can call. We can put them on speakerphone to discuss, and they can also vote over the phone.
Brilliant.
So this might be something you guys all may want to gang up and say, hey, guys, come on.
You got to show up one or another.
Move these people along.
Okay.
Well, what about having a Zoom meeting option? I mean, like we're having with Microsoft Teams.
There's only cable TV and a phone.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I don't, I don't get the cable. I don't have that trip, so...
We're here. We're here. I'm not worried about you. Joanne has been here since the height of COVID.
But I'm just wondering, I mean, assuming they do, I don't know if they do.
Joanne hasn't been here, yeah, we certainly want to go after it with the COVID. John, who knows? So if they do get that, that is one option.
That's great. So we can have a whole quorum even if...
Move them on speakerphone, and that will suffice legally according to the governor's...
So the quorum does not have to be physically here?
No, they do not. So you have to vote.
What date can we order for that?
If they doesn't make a meeting now, she could vote from the phone if you have to, like we did with Kyle at our meeting.
Right, I mean, I do Zoom meetings all the time.
I know, but to 2020, our next regular meeting is February 10th, February 10th. So we'll put them on the agenda for the next meeting. And if you guys could really kind of check with those people and see if they could just, one of them even, so that something could move them off if you had to.
Because we've already had a public here.
Yeah, so that's fine.
So one thing I want to say is Sam was saying this is a permitted use, but what that means is that it is possible for the planning board to issue a permit for a restaurant in a residential area. That doesn't mean that it's automatic in any way at all. It's like a special situation rather than a...
It's not as if, right. It's a special permit.
It's a special permit, but it's a very unusual special permit because it's unusual to have a business in a residential area.
Well, it's not purely residential. It's part of the parcel's commercial. It's a split part, like the parcel's split commercial residence. We're not just in like someone's house wanting to do this. It's a Main Street address in a half-commercial zone.
Which part is, see, I'm not clear on what is the front of the driveway.
Parcel has been split in two for some reason, so the...
That's not shown on the survey map?
It's not. I'm not sure where we saw that.
I saw it on the Ulster County Parcel Viewer website.
Yes.
Okay, so the driveway, half of the driveway then?
Correct.
It's commercial.
You start on hamlet commercial and then you enter hamlet residential.
Okay.
So actually, the area on the abutting is...
But the area abutting the neighbors is residential.
No, that it's actually the commercial area. The house that part is in the residential area.
So the area abutting the supermarket is commercial?
And that's, yeah.
Right, right, right. So the people who actually live there are the ones that are in the residential area. And as far as they're concerned, it's a residential area. So to put a business there is a really big change. And that, I think that's the main objection I have because it seems to me like you have a perfectly good business plan except for the size of the property and the traffic, which I find could be problematic. And I know that was, the Ulster County Planning Board had issues with that too. But the main issue I have is the residential nature of the, of the community and how small and tight it is and how, what a big change it is just to have a driveway, which didn't exist before.
The house has been there for several years.
Which you have perfect right, you have a perfect right to have a driveway, but that means, I'm saying that it was a wooded, quiet area before the renovation. And now, you know, now as a residential family, you would be quite, you know, fitting in with the neighborhood regardless of the size of your driveway, the size of your parking lot, whatever.
I understand what you're saying about it being a, I mean, this is why we're applying for the special permit is we're trying to appease that this is something that the community needs. But they are, you know, the area that we're in, we are next to the grocery store. We have the Bell, which is a bed and breakfast right next to it in our, that's like right in our lot.
That's the commercial side of your property, yeah.
Right, I'm just saying, like, the whole area is in a very commercially, like, there are lots of businesses besides us that are around.
And that's why you want to do a site plan because I went to the Ulster County Parcel Viewer, I shared with my fellows on this board. You've got a theater, a gas station, a Valero convenience, a supermarket, a funeral parlor, an EMT, a doctor's office, an entrance to a major park amenity where we do operas. There's a lot going on around you, and it's in your best interest to have a site plan that shows the neighborhood around you. There's a lot of commercial stuff that surrounds the residential properties that are having a problem with us. And I think it's important, zoom out a little bit, show onsite plan. Again, community opposition is something we have to take seriously, but we also have to take seriously, what is the status of Main Street Phoenisha today compared to 10 years ago? I think Phoenisha needs a little bit of help.
So as you can see, there's a difference of opinion even on the board, and we have no way of knowing how the other board members feel until they speak for, you know, on the issue. And, you know, we have to make sure they have all, all the information, and we'll take it from there.
Can I say something? No, I love it.
Of course.
One of the, if you were, well, if you were here that night, one of the biggest breaches, because, you know, grocery stores don't make much noise at night, was a lot of those residents, since you're nestled so far back, that when they get home at night after working on Main Street, they don't want to be back there where there's, and now you're saying about staying open longer.
Well, daylight hours just makes it summer.
That's pretty long in the, in the summer, yeah.
Basically, I would just like, we need to be able to make money where business, of course, right? So we're not proposing having dine-in till 8:30 at night, you know, you would just...
In the summer, it could be till eight or nine if you're going to do dust stuff, so...
Well, no, I mean, maybe daylight hours is not...
We just don't want to be limited to closing and reapply, yeah.
Maybe daylight hours is not what we should say is our proposal. We would just like to, to be able to operate within a reasonable timeframe, say 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, you know, like a normal steward.
Was the time, because they go back to their homes away from Main Street, because you're nestled back there quite away. There's people behind you. It's very quiet normally.
Don't intend to be open at 8:00 or 9:00.
Give me a heads up, because, you know, let me go on my office tomorrow complaining. I'm neutral.
Well, it's good that you're saying that, you know, you're thinking more ahead about your business plan because that was, that was a big concern for me, and with the neighbors that spoke at the hearing, was you start small, but you don't really want to confine yourself to that. It's not a good business plan to say, I'm going to limit my hours just because, you know, that's the only way I can have a business. It's not ideal. And I can see that in the future it could be a problem to have any kind of limitation on your business going forward. But the conditions that the neighborhood seem to be thinking might mitigate their impact would limit your operation. I mean, there's no way around that. So, you know, you might want to think about that. We're certainly going to have to think about that. I don't want to have you start a business and then come back and say, but we really need the extra space. We need to have tables outside. Honestly, I would love to see that if it were not for the neighbors. And that's really, you know, it's hard to make a decision. You can't make a decision that really pleases everybody. It seems that way. I wish there was. So we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, I mean, probably not. I guess just in some, like, we're not trying to say, like, we obviously hope to do well and to, you know, bring something to the community, but we understand the limitations of the space. You know, this is our first business endeavor going into, like, we are not branches, you know, like, that's great that they're doing all that, but like, we realize that we have a very small space to work with, and if we could have a location on Main Street Phoenisha in town, that would be great, but there are none available. So I think, you know, I'm very passionate about providing something to the community that doesn't exist, and if this is the only way we can do it, I'd be very happy to start there, so.
Well, the key word is start.
Yeah, yes. In this location, yeah. This is like, this needs to happen somewhere, so.
Okay. I mean, I think we...
So we'll meet in February, and we'll make sure to put an effort that all members show up either face-to-face or virtually.
If you guys can hook it up and do a Zoom, and trust that John could do it, I think Joanne could do it. Well, you got to nail them down to this, because, you know, this is very unusual circumstances. These two had to be recused. So, you know, that's why, yeah, you know, we got to do it legally.
Grace, yeah.
So if we get Joanne, whoever can talk to you, the one of those.
I don't have their contact information. I guess I'd have, I would have to hand off of you.
They're on recent emails. You know, I'm more than happy to take the lead on emailing them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I can do that, so rather, that way Cliff is not involved with that, and I can make that effort.
Just put in the notes for this meeting that they're going to try to provide a site plan. Maybe the next meeting, we'll put them on the agenda first, next meeting. We don't have any public hearings coming up, but we know us, so, thank God, but we'll see how it goes.
Well, thank you for your guarantee, Sarah. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So will you be able to set up a Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did it for a couple of meetings we had.
Oh, you did that, okay.
Instead of setting it up for Zoom, we just broadcast it, broadcast it, and let them call in if they don't want to do Zoom.
Take a call in, yeah. Take a, take a speaker box. There's only one of them called now.
Well, the thing about a Zoom meeting is got the visuals right there, you know, so I think that's easier to work with.
She could do the Zoom just on her computer.
Yeah.
I understand that.
And then she can go, they'll, I'll, and then they'll take the call. So it's up to that.
Yeah, just like we did today with the teams, yeah.
Right, yeah. Whatever's a more comfortable way, it'll be easy for you guys.
It's all the same.
You want to take this with you, Stany? This is after, you're the test tomorrow, you guys?
I'll be a test tomorrow.
Does anybody have anything else unrelated to Sparkle? No?
No.
Motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye.
What's the time?
Pacing out, Secretary. Now, hopefully, we're going to get someone, but I will come with I to the test.
Thank you.
You can get yourself something.
Do you have somebody that's interested?
We just spoke with, yeah.
I know, I've won one. How do I get one?
Single-family house.
You said Joyce could get me one.
I can't do anything. Locked.
Joyce?
Yes, ma'am.
Art said you could get me one of these big blue books.
We have to get it from what's his name.
Who's what's his name?
Brewer? Don Brewer has it. I've been asked for it.
Oh, he didn't return it.
No, so every time you see him, stop by. Please pop that door, please. These now books, eventually they're going all digital. I told you there is an app for your phone.
Yeah, I remember you showed us.
These books now cost $500. Yeah, those are 300. So Don needs to hand it in, because, come on, Don. Who's taking the branches map?
That's mine.
Is this yours? Do you need this?
No, you can take that.